Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address counsel this evening on agenda topics?
Can I ask questions, right?
No.
Okay. All right, I'm Lauren Drogoman. I live at 203 Forest Street here in Marshall. I am a volunteer conservationist. I care pretty deeply about this community and the nature surrounding it, and I feel that it needs to be protected at any cost.
Can I ask which agenda topic you're speaking to?
The proposed, what is it?
IPP.
IPP.
Okay. Could you keep your comments on the IPP, please?
Absolutely. I just wanted to say that I think we all have a lot of trust in all of you to do your research and make an informed decision. I really hope that you guys represent the people of this community and the surrounding environment when doing so and not, number one, over any dollar amount, whatever it may be, and I really hope that you guys are responsible. That's really all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.[82.61][82.61](applause) Anyone else wishing to address counsel this evening on agenda topics?
Seeing none, we'll move to our consent agenda. We have 7A is our city council minutes with our minutes from our work session on December 15th, 2025, and our regular session on December 15th, 2025. 7B is city bills. We have purchases on December 12th, 2025 of $342,158.99. 7B is purchases from December 19th, 2025 of $1,095,919.13, and then purchases from December 22nd, 2025 of $64,909.09 for a total of $1,502,978.21. 7C is special event request for the Ice Wine Beer &amp; Blues Festival, and 7D is our January 10th city council meeting for time change. Do I have a motion on 7, on the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I would move that I recuse myself from this item because there's an item that I submitted on there for the special event request. Doesn't benefit me financially, but just out of an abundance of caution.
We have a recusal request from Member Gates. Do I have a motion?
I move that we recuse Gates from this vote since he does have some connection to this.
Second.
I have a motion support. Just do a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Member Gates is recused from the consent agenda vote. That being said, I need a motion regarding the consent agenda.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Motion in support, and Mr. Roll call vote, please.
Could we just make some clarity first on 7D, the January 10th city council meeting time change? The time change is removing it to 8:00 AM. Moving that time to 8:00 AM.
Roll call vote, please.
Member Cheney-Hoggett.
Yes.
Member Hackworth.
Yes.
Member Skibby.
Yes.
Member Traver.
Yes.
Member Underhill.
Yes.
And Mayor Wolfersberger.
Yes.
Motion carries, Your Honor.
Thank you. Moves us to item 9A, update on our 2025 action plan, and City Manager, bear.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Item 9A, if you recall, a year ago, city council approved about 69 action plan, which essentially are goals and objectives that you want the city team to prioritize and place most of their energy upon. These are outside of our normal day-to-day tasks. What we have before you tonight is the annual update of all the items that have been accomplished, those we fell short on, and those that need a little more time. Again, just wanted to get this before city council, and we appreciate the opportunity to present these to you. Following tonight's meeting, we'll have this placed on the city's website, too.
Thank you. Any questions, comments, or discussion? Seeing none, I'd seek a motion regarding 9A.
A move that we receive the 2025 end-of-year action plan report.
Second. A motion support, it's a voice call, or it's a voice vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moves us to item 10A, Resolution 2025-31, Oprah District Establishment for 211 and 213 East Michigan Avenue, and Director Strange.
Good evening. In relation to the Oprah District Establish, excuse me, Oprah District Establishment for 211 and 213 East Michigan Avenue, this is a request for tax incentives related to that This in particular is for the establishment of the Oprah District only. So we have several items on the agenda tonight that are kind of tied together, and this is the first of that process. This is the public hearing associated with the establishment of that Oprah District, which then allows a project to come forward, to be, take advantage of those tax incentives. It ties to the Brownfield Plan that is also for that same address, and is just one of the tools, incentive tools, that are used to help with development in our downtown I'm not sure if you want me to read through a lot of this information. I'm happy to answer questions as we go through this. So the developer that is proposing this is the Marshall Property Investments LLC. Brad Noel is here this evening, along with some of his representatives. They are available for any questions. As part of their plan, they're requesting this Oprah District Establishment so that an Oprah District can then be established on that site. As part of their project, they are planning full rehabilitation of their two, three-story historic commercial buildings into mixed-use development that feature four first-floor commercial spaces, eight upper-floor residential apartments, and totaling approximately 12,420 square feet of renovation. And their proposed investment is in excess of $3 million.
Before we get into the public hearing, could you just give an overview of how the Oprah District benefits the community?
Yes. So really, what it does is incentivizes investments for projects that might not be fiscally responsible for the investor without those incentives. What it does for the city from a tax basis, we continue to get the same level of taxes through the period of the Oprah window, I'm sorry, lost the words there for a second. But what would have been as far as taxes, right, the increase in taxes due to the renovation doesn't spike until after that timeframe is ended. And so basically, that initial timeframe, when people are investing their monies, you know, they've gone to the bank, they've gotten a loan, they're investing a lot, they're waiting for leases to come in from their, you know, they need to fill those spaces on the commercial level, they need to fill those spaces, apartments on the second and third, second and third floors. That takes time, and the first years after that initial investment are really the most important as far as whether those projects can be successful, and it really incentivizes that investment. Without this, it really makes it difficult to begin repayment on those loans once the construction is complete.
Thank you. I think we'll save the rest of comments and discussion until after the public hearing. With that, I will open the public hearing on Resolution 2025-31, Oprah District Establishment for 211 and 213 East Michigan Avenue. Anyone wishing to address counsel this evening on this resolution? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Any comments, questions, or discussion from counsel?
One of these, the buildings, I know a handful of years ago that were almost unusable because of some of the structural damage. I'm talking maybe five to eight years ago, I believe, was this one of those addresses that...
We actually have the developer here in the audience. I don't know if you'd like to have them come forward and speak a little bit about the building, maybe their interest and why they want to redevelop it, maybe answer some of those questions specifically that they may have better knowledge of.
Sure, since they made the trip tonight. Would you like to come forward?
Just three minutes.
Just to be clear, when we invite someone to speak on an agenda topic like this and they are representing someone, it's up to us how long they talk. Thank you.
Three minutes is plenty.[671.32][671.32](laughter) What was the question?
So my question was, was that one of the addresses that was, had a lot of structural issues, but I think I'm off one building. I think that was the building next to it.
There is, there is no structural damage.
Okay. All right. So what, can you just kind of give us just two minutes of some of the plans that you have that you would like to do to restore the two buildings that you're looking at right now?
Yeah, so the first floor has been used commercially. One is leased out currently. The second space would be turned into three new spaces. That's been vacant for about two years. Used to be a dentist office. The second and third floor have been vacant, as far as I can tell, back into the 1970s. So there was a fire on the third floor at one point. We're going to be completely renovating the inside of the building, and then on the outside, redoing all the masonry. We're going to be putting in an elevator, really just to have some nice housing in the downtown area.
Any other comments, questions, or discussion? Thank you, sir. Seeing no further discussion, I will seek a motion regarding, sir? I already, we did the public hearing, yeah? Oh, sure.
One question, I think probably for Marsha or City Manager. Within Oprah District Established, if the seller of the property were to sell, was say halfway within that Oprah District period, say it's 10 years, they sell within five years, does that transfer, those benefits transferred to the new owner, or does the new owner pay the full taxable value?
Correct me if I'm wrong, my understanding is that it runs with the property. Once you establish that district and that certificate's been issued and approved by the state of Michigan, it runs with that parcel.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, or discussion?
One more question clarification. The length of the Oprah District coincides with the amount of investment. It's not just 10 years or 12 years, it is based on the amount of the investment, isn't that correct?
Correct. So the Oprah allows up to a 12-year tax exemption, but city council, I believe, a year or two ago created a policy, and based on the level of investment, that's how we determine essentially what the term of that exemption. I believe it's in excess of $1 million that you're eligible for the 12-year term.
Thank you.
Comment briefly to say thank you to the gentleman for investing in Marshall's downtown. This tool has been incredibly successful. I'd be interested to know at some point how many millions have poured into our downtown of people renovating these properties. I remember growing up, looking at all the apart, all the spaces up above the downtown buildings, and like they were vacant, 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 and now, you know, through this mechanism, they've been being redone, and so I think it's going to be a big key to keeping our downtown vital and vibrant in the future, so it's been fantastic.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions, or discussion?
I just want to clarify, so this action creates the district. What we've done historically is we do one-off districts for the individual parcels. Some communities create districts in maybe a certain segment of their city or something, but we've gone down the path of individual districts per parcel. So that's why it seems like maybe we're doing multiple steps, but that's because we do this step, or we create the district for each parcel. So I just wanted to clarify that.
And they don't, they're all running individually on the investment, not... All right. Seeing no other questions or discussion, I will seek a motion regarding 10A.
I move that we approve Resolution 2025-31, Resolution to Establish an Oprah District for 211-213 East Michigan Avenue, authorize the city manager and city clerk to sign the necessary documents.
Second. A motion in support, and it's a roll call vote, please.
Member Gates.
Yes.
Member Hackworth.
Yes.
Member Skibby.
Yes.
Member Traver.
Yes.
Member Underhill.
Yes.
Yes.
And Member Cheney-Hoggett.
Yes.
Motion carries, Your Honor.
Thank you. That moves us to item 12, I'm sorry, 10B, Resolution 2025-32, Brownfield Plan Request for 211 and 213 East Michigan Avenue, and Director Strange is back with us.
Hello. This request is for the same property that we just discussed for the Oprah District. So this project is a pretty large project. There's over $3 million worth of investment, and in order to, again, make numbers work for this investment to happen, there is an Oprah, an Oprah Plan that is proposed, and then also a Brownfield Plan. And you might be familiar with Brownfield Plans from other, you know, you've heard of Brownfield sites as far as contamination and things, but this is, tool is being used in a different way, and it's perfectly acceptable. There is, there is a way, they're using this as a tool to get reimbursed for expenses that are approved expenses. So not all of their investment, they don't get reimbursed for all their investment. There are certain things that are, use my words here, sorry, that are...
Contaminants.
Not even necessarily contaminated, but along that lines, right? So you've got lead, you've got asbestos, you've got abatement, you know, things that happen, and the eligible expenses, that is the word I'm looking for, I'm so sorry. There is a list of eligible expenses, right? And so they have tried to quantify what those eligible expenses will be as far as the project goes. They have to keep track of that all the way through construction, but right now, they have a plan, or they're proposing a plan in order to expend those dollars upfront. And then, again, they have the Oprah, that would be the beginning, where the taxes would be kept lower, but then, once the taxes kind of kick back in, what the Brownfield Plan is, is they actually get reimbursed through the tax, through the taxes, right? So the taxes get paid, but they get reimbursed for their expenses that qualify. So this, again, is another way to incentivize investment, and it's the same, you know, it's the same project information that's being provided, and it is length of time, so the Oprah is the 12-year, Oprah at the beginning, you know, starts when the project is complete, the Oprah kicks in, then the taxes go up. There's a graph that was presented as part of the packet, but that's when you start capturing some of those taxes in order to reimburse the developer. I'm happy to answer, try to answer any questions, and again, we do have the...
And just to be clear, the city will continue to receive the same level of taxes they're receiving now.
Correct.
Even while these districts are in place.
Correct. That baseline amount that we are currently getting does not decrease. It stays the same all the way through the length of time that both of these incentives are in place.
Further clarify, when you say reimburse, it's not us writing a check, it's that their taxes are not going up, is that correct, an amount proportionate to what they spent?
I'm not sure how to state that differently. Yeah, could you come up, I'm gonna, sorry, I'm gonna defer to the real expert.
Just want to make sure everybody understands.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Dave Van Heren with TRITERA, where we wrote the Brownfield Plan and Oprah Application. So on the Brownfield, when we say reimbursement, there's still, you know, the, this wouldn't happen, there would be no reimbursement without the project. So the developer makes their investment, the 3.8 million, I think it is, of total investment to rehabilitate the building, and then once that Oprah expires, the taxable value is going to rise, and they're still going to pay a tax bill based on that new taxable value, that, the taxable value of the property. So the tax bill gets paid, the city, due to the Brownfield Authority, would then capture the increment of increase in new taxes, and then reimburse the developer for their costs that they've actually incurred. So it's not a, you know, a couple of things have to happen, the investment has to happen to increase the value of the property, then they provide all of their invoices and proof of payment, sworn statements, you know, and what we're talking about is in terms of eligible activities, the two main ones are demolition costs and asbestos abatement, that's the majority of the Brownfield Plan. So they provide their invoices that the abatement has occurred, the clearance report that all the asbestos is gone, that an environmental consultant has confirmed it's gone, and then they document that they've completed the activities, and here's the invoices that we've paid our contractors. That allows for that reimbursement.
So the city is writing a check, but it's of taxes received, rebate of taxes received?
Yep, that they literally just paid, and once that's received, that a portion of that gets paid back.
Okay, thank you.
You take out the base taxes, and it's just the incremental increase. Yep.
Thank you. If everybody's ready, we'll go ahead and start the public hearing. I'll open the public hearing for item 10B, Resolution 2025-32, Brownfield Plan Request for 211 and 213 East Michigan Avenue. Does anyone wish to address the counsel tonight on this topic? Yes, sir?
David Beg, 504 West Green Street. I'm very happy about these projects, very excited to see this happen. These are historic buildings in Marshall, and renovating them, revitalizing them ultimately is going to increase their tax value to this community, and we're lucky to have people willing to step up and take on these huge projects. So I definitely support this work.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to address counsel on Resolution 2025-32? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any further comments, questions, or discussion?
I'm wondering why no one has ever used this before. Is this something new that we, I mean, I would think that many of our developers that are renovating our downtown buildings would find this super helpful in their, in their construction and development plans.
I think she's asking, yes, you, yeah.
So I can't say why it hasn't been done before. I think that the Brownfield Plans have not historically been used for residential purposes, and I can't remember if that was a recent change, if that tied to the recent...
Recently, there's been kind of like a housing mechanism added to the Brownfield to encourage housing at state level. They just kind of utilize the Brownfield statute to do that, but shorter answer is we're not really sure, right? Marshall just does not have a long history of utilizing the Brownfield mechanism. Some communities, they have hundreds of them on the books, it's just that's not been, I think the first one was the Dark Horse Project that failed to materialize, and then the most recent one was with the storage units there on Industrial Road. So this is kind of a new program for Marshall.
Thank you. I hope more developers take advantage of it, actually.
The only thing I saw, sorry, Marsha, you sat back down. The only thing I saw on here that was a little puzzling to me as a reimbursable expense was interest. Is that, is that, I mean, I assume it's an allowable expense, but is that standard for these type of plans?[1504.51][1504.51](laughter)
Thank you.
Yeah, that's pretty standard, was that, I forgot who asked, sorry, that is very standard. The statute allows for interest, typical guidance from the MEDC, they try to limit it to up to 5%, and so we, we do, you know, we do, it depends on the, you know, the financial performer for a project, whether or not we propose interest or not, you know, we saw it as valuable to this project, you know, but also want to keep the duration of the Brownfield Plan to 20 years. You could go up to 30 years under the statute, but like what fits this project as a 20-year plan with those eligible costs, including interest? Yep. I think we proposed 5% on this one as well. It was simple interest, it's basically the balance every year for that 20-year period. Whenever there's a reimbursement, it's 5% on the principal balance, which hasn't been reimbursed today, so.
The final comment I add is, so we do have a policy for the Oprah, we do have a policy for our 198 tax abatements, but we don't have a policy for our Brownfield incentives, because again, it is kind of a new program for us. So I think you'll see in our 2026 action plan that we develop a policy related to that and touch upon things like simple interest, whether that's an allowable expense, and if so, what do we allow up to terms, things like that, so.
I'll just reiterate the sentiment that this is a badly needed investment in our downtown, our downtown buildings have been neglected, the property values didn't support this type of investment for a long, long time, so seeing this type of investment come back to the community is really spectacular, so. I don't see any further comments or questions, so I will seek a motion regarding 10B.
I move that we approve Resolution 2025-32, a resolution to approve a Brownfield Plan for 211 and 213 East Michigan Avenue, and authorize the city manager and city clerk to sign the necessary documents.
A motion in support, and it's a roll call vote, please.
Member Hackworth.
Yes.
Member Skibby.
Yes.
Member Traver.
Yes.
Member Underhill.
Yes.
Mayor Wolfersberger.
Yes.
Member Cheney-Hoggett.
Yes.
And Member Gates.
Yes.
Motion carries, Your Honor.
Thank you. That brings us to item 10C, public hearing for special land use application, number 25.02A for 775 Industrial Road, and Director Strange is back with us.
Tiger Sewing purchased property at 775 Industrial Road. This is the property that is immediately north of our city-owned treatment plant. The planning commission, the project was developed for the site, that includes a lot for their towing, self-storage units, a small, I'm sorry, words tonight, I'm very sorry. Office? A small, like, check-in office area, and then another outdoor storage lot. That project went through planning commission, and a public hearing at that point also related to the special land use application, because a special land use is required for self-storage per our ordinance, and also is required for outdoor storage, which is ancillary to a primary use for the site. So both of those, and I'm sorry that 25.02A just shows up on the title, but it's, both of those are a part of the special land use. So you see in the recommendation that it's special land use, O2A and O2B, which, like I said, is for outdoor storage and for the self-storage units. And if you have any questions associated with that, I'm happy to help.
I don't see any questions or comments from counsel, so we'll start the public hearing. I'll open the public hearing for 10C, Special Land Use Application. I'll open the public hearing for 10C, Special Land Use Application, number 2502A and number 2502B for 775 Industrial Road. Anyone wishing to address council on this topic? Yes, sir?
Again, Regis Klinger, 348 Butler Court in Marshall. On reviewing the site plan and design drawings for this, I noticed the landscaping going almost up to the road. I would highly recommend that there be space allowed for a future bike path or sidewalk there. If you put landscaping up the road, it's going to really make it messy in the future if you ever want to put that there. I have proposed the long industrial road as a possible connector for the North Country Trail and for connectivity around the city, I think as a goal, that more walking and more connected paths and trails. So I would highly recommend that those site plans be revised to show the landscaping back beyond the easement and have leave room for a sidewalk or trail there. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address council on this topic? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the